I call the May 22nd, 2018 regular session agenda of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And we'll have, I'll ask my colleagues on City Council to stand as Reverend Dr. Johnny Drake of Living Water Victory Center brings her invocation. Then afterwards, Councilman Moody will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening.
God is good. May we bow our head. Dear heavenly Father, I praise you and I thank you and I exalt your holy name for extending your mercy and your grace to these your people. People elected by and for this council, by the people and for these people, and chosen by God to stand in the midst of the challenges and difficulties of this time, in this place, to enhance the lives of the citizens of this city. We know that there is nothing that we can do in our own strength, but we know that all things do work together for good to those who love the Lord and are called according to his purpose. Thank you, Father, for those words that say, "Work together for good." So bind us together, glue us together, so that we might be a cohesive family that love one another and will do whatever it takes to promote the welfare of our city. Teach us that even if we disagree, we will not be disagreeable. So, Father, let our will be settled in your purpose, because I know that wherever, whatever we do unto the least of these, our brothers and sisters, we've done it unto you. You see, we are accountable. Therefore, Father, I stretch my hands unto thee, no other help I know. If thou withdraw thyself from me, whither shall I go? Bless now this prayer for me and these people, in the precious name of the Shabbos alone, the Prince of Peace, the Alpha and the Omega, the Beginning and the End, the only begotten Son of God, Jesus Christ. I pray. Let the people say, "Amen." Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Well, now I'll have our electronic roll call, and I'll ask my colleagues on council to signify their presence tonight by hitting the yes button. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum.
Yes, sir.
And the next item?
Are we still having, well, it's fixed now. My light was on when I hadn't pressed it. Okay, so we're good?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Our next item is approval of minutes, and we have minutes of a call meeting of May 7th, 2018, the minutes of a call meeting of May 8th, 2018, and the minutes of a regular meeting of May 8th, 2018. We'll consider these all together as our motion to approve.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion, motions to approve? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my colleagues, we have three public hearings, two relate to zoning matters. The first public hearing is 18-194. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Public hearing with respect to the adoption of a proposed resolution granting easements to Atlantic Coast Pipeline, LLC, in connection with the development and operation of a natural gas pipeline.
And ladies and gentlemen, this relates to item 18-197, which is on our agenda tonight. To the public and to my colleagues, because I own a small amount of Dominion Resources stock, I'm going to recuse myself from both participating in the public hearing and from the vote. Therefore, the Vice Mayor will open and close and conduct the public hearing. Once the public hearing is completed, she'll pass the gavel back to me. And I think Councilman Smith is asked for the floor, too.
Thank you, Mayor, and I, too, will abstain from this one because I am an employee of Dominion Energy.
Thank you, sir. All right. Passing the gavel over to the Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please? For item 194?
She's ready.
Oh, you did. All righty. We have, the first registered speaker is Max Bartholomew, and so you have five minutes.
Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor of Massapeacham. Members of the City Council, the City of Portsmouth, good evening. My name is Max Bartholomew, and I'm the Regional Director of State and Local Affairs for Dominion Energy and a member of the Atlantic Coast Pipeline Project Team. I come before you tonight requesting your approval to grant utility access and related easements located in the cities of Suffolk and Chesapeake, where the ACC Pipeline is routed on City of Portsmouth property. The ACP project will bring 1.5 billion cubic feet of natural gas a day into Virginia for electric power station generation, economic development initiatives, as well as residential, commercial, industrial, military facilities, and base customers. This project has been endorsed by the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce, the Portsmouth Chamber of Commerce, Reinvent Hampton Roads, the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, and retired Admiral Craig Quigley with the Hampton Roads Military and Federal Facilities Alliance. The ACP will create over 8,000 construction jobs in Virginia, which are represented by the 23 unions that make up the Virginia State Building and Construction Trade Council. The total economic impact during construction will be over $1.4 billion, with an annual tax revenue to Virginia of $2.4 million. The ACP's highest priority is safety during construction, and that priority will continue once the pipeline is commissioned and in service. There are rigorous federal and state testing protocols with extensive inspections, and the pipeline will be monitored by Dominion 24/7, 365, at our state-of-the-art gas control center. I am joined tonight with fellow ACP project team colleagues, and we are prepared to answer questions or concerns you need addressed. Thank you for your consideration to approve our request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. We can hear from speakers who have not signed up to this public hearing. If there's anyone who did not sign up and would like to speak, please come forward, give us your name and address, and you will have five minutes to speak. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed.
Thank you. This brings us to our next public hearing, and Madam Clerk, would you read that caption?
Yes, sir. 18-195, Public Hearing on Rezoning and Code Amendment Applications. Item A, Z1801, Portsmouth Acres. Robert C. Barclay, the fourth Esquire, on behalf of WP2 LLC, requests a proffer zoning, rezoning of 303 Bradford Court. The property is currently zoned...
Point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your point of order.
The council members, the items are switched around. I just don't have the revised, so I have the revised now. Okay.
Start again.
I'll start again. Okay. Item A, CA1801, citywide. The City of Portsmouth is proposing to amend the city zoning ordinance to increase the minimum lot sizes only for new subdivisions and re-subdivisions in the general residential, urban residential, and urban residential high zoning districts at the request of the Portsmouth City Council. The minimum lot sizes proposed are no greater than, one, the general residential district, 12,500 square feet, with a lot width of 75 feet; two, in the urban residential district, 6,000 square feet, with a lot width of 60 feet; and three, in the urban residential high district, 7,500 square feet, with a lot width of 50 feet. The lot widths indicated above may be reduced to the average lot width in the same block. The proposed amendments will not affect existing lots of record, except as otherwise provided in the zoning ordinance. Planning Commission recommends approval of this application. Electronic roll call.
Thank you, ma'am. But this is a public hearing on what is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Before we start the public hearing, Dr. Patton, do you have a short briefing on this matter?
Yes. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and Mr. Hartley will come forward.
Mayor Rowe, members of City Council. What is proposed before you tonight essentially is a change in the lot sizes and frontage requirements in a number of the zoning districts. Just to kind of give a little background, prior to 2010, there were 13 different residential zoning districts in the zoning ordinance. And when the ordinance was written in 2010, they were, those 13 districts were consolidated into four districts. The proposed amendments are to increase the lot area and width in three of those four districts, and there's a table that I'll present in just a minute that explains that in a little more detail. Couple of key points here is that this only applies to new subdivisions and does not apply to new lots, so it's only for new development or re-subdivision of existing lots that these requirements would apply. So we're not creating more non-conforming lots. The other thing that we've proposed in, as part of the amendments, is that it'll, it does allow for narrower lots that are consistent with the existing lots in a single block. And that's, that's, the intent of all of this is to, is to ensure that the infill development that we, that we are seeing around the city is consistent and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Finally, there's a, we've proposed a 90-day sunset for any Platts that we've, that we received prior to the formal adoption of these amendments. So if anybody's got, already submitted something to our department, and that, or somebody submits something between now and the time of adoption, we would continue to process it. They would have 90 days to complete that process. This table, which you have before you, and it may be a little difficult to read, is really a summary of the existing and proposed zoning, minimum lot sizes, and lot widths. Essentially, the column on the, on the furthest left, I'm going to see if I can get a light to work here, are the existing zoning districts. This next column are the zoning districts that existed prior to 2010. And if we look at the UR district here in the, in the pinkish color, what that equates to is that the current lot size in that district, which really makes up most of the residential zoning in the city, or the largest portion, it allows for a lot of 5,000 square feet and a frontage, or lot width, I should say, of 35 feet. If you compare that to the districts that existed prior to 2010, that is the same lot size as the smallest lot size prior to 2010, and the frontage is substantially smaller than the 50-foot that was required prior to 2010. What we are proposing is a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet with a minimum lot width of 60 feet. So the idea here is to balance both the lot size and the lot width, but again, allow for situations where the lot width is narrower, already narrower in the existing neighborhood. So again, the idea is compatibility and consistency with the existing development pattern that's there. There are pictures here of two examples. One is at the intersection of Deep Creek Boulevard and Greenwood Drive, where there used to be three lots, there are now five, and the lot configuration that exists today is the small map on the left-hand corner. The photograph is the resulting development from the subdivision. The second, the second picture is on Deep Creek Boulevard also, where a single lot was divided in half, and the result were, were two new homes that, that have been constructed. The home in the background gives you an idea somewhat of the space that existed on either side prior to that, that development. Obviously, the homes that are, that are new, new construction are substantially closer to each other, they're closer to the street, all of those things. And, and the issue in many neighborhoods has been that the lot width is so narrow that there's not enough parking on site, so we're seeing parking on streets. Gentleman here tonight was just showing me some flooding problems that have been created by this infill development. So it's really creating a lot of problems around the city for, for our residents and neighborhoods. With that, I'll, I'll end my comments and try to answer any questions that you have.
Does any member of council have any questions for Mr. Hartley? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing on this proposed amendment to the city's zoning ordinance, and I will open the public hearing. We do have one registered speaker, and that's Joanne Clark. Ma'am, are you present? And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. I appreciate Mr. Hartley giving you some history on what the city's getting ready to do with these amendments, and I applaud you for making that change. So I'm not really in opposition to it, but I do want to add some suggestions to the process. But Mr. Hartley did not mention that the 2010 ordinance never mentioned the word suburban. It never really talked about any areas of development for residential property west of the High Street Bridge. You have communities with larger lots, so nowhere in that ordinance is the word suburban, suburban overlay, or suburban district. Also, this affects what we're doing with this lot size adjustment. Now, I was doing some research from our sister cities, and I was picking up some information, say specifically, on general residential neighborhoods. In the City of Chesapeake, they have an R12 residential district for 12,000-square-foot lots. What they recommend is a minimum lot width for lots that have less than 12,000 square feet. The width should be 80 feet, and a minimum lot width for 90 feet for all other lots for exclusive use of stormwater management. As Mr. Hartley had mentioned, when you get properties too close together, you have flooding issues. You've got more runoff going on because there's more roof and more pavement. So I hope that you take that in consideration, the width of these properties. It could be troublesome as far as controlling our runoff water and cause more flooding in the city. Eighty-five percent of the city is in the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act, so I hope that maybe they can fine-tune this as this process goes further. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, this is a public hearing on this proposed amendment to the city's zoning ordinance. Does anybody want to speak, either for or against the proposed amendment? If you do, please come to the lectern, state your name and address, please. Again, this is a public hearing. You do not have to be pre-registered to speak. Seeing no one that wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, this is an action item for us tonight. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
This is first reading on the public hearing, Mayor.
Oh, okay. So that we can consider this on first reading, is there a motion for approval?
Move adoption.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
The next item is also a zoning public hearing, zoning-related. Would you read the caption to that public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. Z1801, Portsmouth Acres. Robert C. Barclay, the fourth Esquire, on behalf of WP2 LLC, requests a proffered zoning of 303 Bedford Court. The property is currently zoned general residential. The proposed zoning is conditional light industrial. The Comprehensive Plan designates the property as part of a mixed-use corridor. Planning Commission recommends denial of this application.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I'll explain the protocol that will follow. I'll ask the city manager to have the appropriate person, if it's not her, to give a broad, broad overview. Then we'll have the applicant come forward, and the applicant will have 10 minutes to explain to council the details of the application. Council may ask questions. And then after that, I'll open the public hearing, and then we'll consider the matter. So with that, Madam City, City Manager, Dr. Patton?
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, members of council. As was indicated in the reading of the caption of this application, this is a rezoning application, which is to rezone property from general residential to light industrial conditional. There is a proffer letter that has been submitted with the application. The primary purpose of the conditions is to restrict or prohibit most, if not all, of the light industrial uses from the light industrial district. This item was considered by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission recommended denial by a 6-0 vote. I would just note, just for clarity, and from our staff report, there was an alternative in the planning department's recommendation that indicated that an alternative would be to, and under the city council's authority, to not approve the light industrial, to go to a general mixed-use conditional. That was the staff's recommendation when it went to the Planning Commission, which the Planning Commission obviously did not, did not agree with. But I just want to make you aware that that was also included in the staff report.
State that zoning again.
That would have been the, the staff's recommendation, which was, in keeping with the conference of plan, would have been to rezone the property, not to light industrial conditional, but to a general mixed-use conditional. One of the primary reasons for that, some of the uses under the general mixed use that have been suggested for this property would normally require use permit, such as a convenience store with gas pumps, and under the light industrial would not require use permit.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Baldwin? Thank you, sir.
Yes, I have a question.
I'm sorry. Dr. Wood.
Mr. Baldwin, under the general mixed-use conditional, was the applicant in favor of that type of zoning or not?
No. I mean, we made them aware of what the staff's recommendation was going to be, but they chose to stick with their application request for the light industrial conditional.
So, so what they're proposing would not fit under this type of rezoning?
What they're proposing would be to restrict uses under the light industrial if this were to be approved, and what will be remaining would be a number of other light industrial uses, which include, for example, and just as I use an example, convenience stores with gas pumps. And in the light industrial district, that's a by right use. Where in a general mixed-use district, that would be a use requiring a conditional use permit.
So they're, they're just seeking to restrict the use?
They're seeking to remain with the light industrial, restricting some of the automotive-oriented uses that were, some of the light industrial uses that they proffered out, but it would leave a number of other light industrial uses that are also allowed in the general mixed use. I mean, what they've basically done is stripped out most of the light industrial uses and left in, uses that would not require use permit.
Would any use require conditional use permit? Under this...
There are, there are uses in the IL that would require use permit.
Such as?
I don't have off the top of my head, unfortunately. I don't have my ordinance with me, but there are uses that would require a use permit, but most of those light industrial uses, they've proffered out.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. I'll ask the applicant's representative to come to the lectern and explain in detail the application. Please identify yourself, and sir, you have 10 minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council and staff. My name is John Wright. I'm the managing member of WP2 LLC. The applicant for Z18-01. Rob Barclay, our council, had business out of the area and could not be here tonight, and that's why he's not making this presentation. Don't know whether we want to pull up the exhibits.
Sir.
Who's got the... Oh, you got, okay, there you go. As you can see, the property is currently, on the map there is GR and hashed in where it says applicant's site. It's at the southwest corner of the intersection of Greenwood and Garwood. The property is currently zoned general residential, surrounded on three sides by industrial or commercial. To the south, we have the railroad tracks, and I believe this site is facing, that, that picture's facing east. You get a view of the Greenwood mini-storage. Click another one, please. This is looking northeast at the Red Barn, and again, there, to the east again, is Greenwood. To the south is the railroad tracks overlooking the masonry contractor's yard in the industrial park. And then to the west, and some to the north, we have, actually, the pump station, bottom right-hand corner is probably more northerly. The house in the center picture is due west, and I'm not sure where the picture in the top left is. Somewhere, obviously, there in the neighborhood. As the staff reported, our request is for IL zoning with conditions, and again, we have wiped the slate clean of most of the noxious, noxious uses in an IL zoning. Not trying to deceive or let anybody think we're trying to do something that's not proper. It is our goal to eventually end up with a convenience store on this site. It is a desirable site. I've owned the site for some 15 years. It has been listed... It has been listed for sale for 15 years without any buyers at all ringing the door. And when they do, they come and ask us, what's it zoned? We go residential. They said, we'd love to have it, but we can't use it as residential property. So the IL with conditions allows us to come back with a convenience store, which is permitted in the mixed use. The convenience store with pumps is allowed in the IL with conditions, and that's why we've asked for IL, because we won't have to come back for a use permit for the gas pumps. With its close proximity to the interstate and the industrial parks that surround us, it makes a perfect transitional site from the heavier industrial that's around us into the commercial. We are bounded by landscaping and the pump station to the northwest, and I don't see that necessarily changing. The site is situated at the only entrance to the Greenwood Industrial Park, which was developed sometime in the late 80s or early 90s. It is a business park with some 23-plus businesses in it employing some 215 people. Many of the businesses are service and delivery-type businesses and currently make frequent trips in and out on a daily basis. In addition to the businesses in the park, we have the added heavy truck traffic by Luckstone that is currently using the former CSX site, which is located in Chesapeake, but accessed by Seaboard Court, and its only access is by this site at Garwood. There's no other way into the park. There is another exit out of the park, but it's a right turn only. Ms. Porter, could you highlight that if you can? Right, come a little bit further closer to you. Right there. That was put in when CSX was loading Ford trucks, when the Ford Truck Factory was still in Norfolk. They were bringing the trucks to this site by truck, and the trucks would leave out, heading back to the Ford plant, leaving out of that small access road right there, or actually, exit road from Seaboard Court, making a right turn only onto Greenwood Drive, giving then quick access to the interstate. Have you heard the comp plan? The comp plan calls for mixed use on this corridor. What we are asking for is allowed in the mixed-use category. So we are in keeping with the comp plan with what we are interested in doing. I believe in your package, the proffers, the proffers that we have proffered are, should be in your package, and you'll see that they've eliminated a lot of the noxious uses that go with an IL category. At this point, I don't have a user for this site. Our goal would be to attract an operator. It's a good location with its proximity to the interstate, and it's a good transition, again, all in keeping with the comp plan. As is common in rezoning, you'll hear from the opposition some possible negative comments about me personally and about another development that I did in the community. They believe that the city approved 10 lots, yet I somehow created 13 lots out of it. You'll also hear that I did a bad job constructing the improvements, and it is causing a drainage problem. The city was called and confirmed to the neighbors that it was constructed properly. I visited the location of the drainage problem. The problem is that the downstream flow is stopped up with leaves, branches, and other debris. The leaves and debris are being dumped in the ditches. A little routine maintenance would solve the drainage issues. And I have asked the clerk to give y'all photos of the drainage problems that we see, and you can see that the ditches are full of water, full of leaves, full of trash, and things of that nature. Again, I reiterate to you that this is a piece of property that's been vacant for 15 years. Currently has an assessed value, I think, somewhere around $80,000, $85,000 combined. We're fortunate enough to allow this to be rezoned for our use. I did some checking today with the city records, and convenience stores in the city are being assessed at anywhere from $1 million to almost $4.8 million. That's a far cry from the taxes being generated on a vacant lot zoned for residential that would not be adequate for residential uses. I'll stand by for further questions if you need them, or answers for questions if you need them. Feel free to call on me. Thank you so much.
The chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker. Sir, if you would.
Yes, Mr. Wright. What is your concern in regards to the general mixed-use conditional beyond having to come back to council for a use permit?
It's the coming back, and the users are not willing to wait and take chances. It's as simple as that, Dr. Whitaker. They, you know, if it's not zoned, the phone doesn't ring, and it's not a residential site.
But, just a follow-up, but what you're trying to put on that property would fit within a general mixed-use unconditional?
Yes, sir, Dr. Whitaker. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I now open the public hearing, and we do have registered speakers. And the first registered speaker is Steve Carroll. And, sir, you have five minutes.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Name is Steve Carroll. This applicant is attempting to get this, a piece of property in this community rezoned, as he just stated, very similar to what he tried to do 11 years ago. The people in this community, having residential community, they want it to stay that way. Children live here, parents live here, grandparents live here. And like 11 years ago, his rezoning request was unanimously rejected by the planning or the zoning board. Portsmouth Acres is the same today as it was 60 years ago. It is the same as it was 11 years ago, a residential community with 40 homes. Portsmouth Acres did not ask for businesses to encroach on their neighborhood. It was forced upon them. They currently must endure reckless speeding commercial trucks that patronize the business park. They are forced to play Dodge Car with motorists who use their neighborhood to shortcut the light at Airline and Greenwood Drive. People coming off the interstate, headed toward Airline, bypass the light by cutting through their neighborhood and putting their children at risk. They do the same coming off of Airline to get onto the interstate. If you allow this rezoning, you allow the complete encirclement of this community. You will cut it off, and you will strangle it, and cause these people to lose value of their property, and force them to leave their homes. And some of these people have lived here a very long time. Mr. Wright wants light industrial because if it's zoned with conditions, it's going to cost him money. He's going to have to do improvements to the roads, to the sewer, to the drainage, and he doesn't want that. Mr. Wright claims, oh, he's now open, when his attorney came to a group meeting with these folks, we asked him, what are you going to put on it? Oh, we're not going to do anything yet. We don't have any plans for it. Now he says a convenience store, and then says out of the same speech, well, we don't have a buyer for it yet. So these people have a right to know what's going to go on this piece of property. Now, what is he going to put on this piece of property? He wants to put a convenience store? Currently, within walking distance, you have a 7-Eleven convenience, 7-Eleven convenience and fuel sales, Red Barn convenience and fuel sales, Speedway convenience and fuel sales, Food Line, Full Grocery, CVS, and Rite Aid Pharmacy. What do we need another convenience store in this corner? How many grocery stores have we lost in this city because of redundancy? We lost Farm Fresh, and didn't we lose, what was it, a Kroger in Chersland? We don't need it, they don't want it. These people have a right to live in a safe, clean community, just like anybody else in this city, including Green Acres where Mr. Wright lives. His attorney used derogatory comments about this neighborhood. He called a house that he demolished a crack house. There's not a single person I've talked to that said that that was going on, and they knew the person that lived in that house. They call a storage lot a junkyard. And as I pointed out to the planning commission, if you want to see a junkyard, go out to the corner of Beet Creek Boulevard and Frederick Boulevard, right across from Dale Homes. That's a junkyard. Leave these people alone. This is a residential community, and if we don't protect homeowners in this city, if we don't protect heads of households and families, there's no future for the city. You can bring all the money you want in here. You're going to have a shell of a city if you don't care about people. Mr. Wright doesn't care about these people. He cares about lining his pockets. He's going to take a piece of property, get it rezoned, and make a fortune selling it. And he doesn't care what goes on it. He doesn't care the impact it has on this neighborhood, and neither does his attorney. Last I heard, his attorney moved to Suffolk so he could run for political office. He doesn't live here. He doesn't care about this neighborhood. I don't live here in there. I don't have a dog in that fight financially, but I care about people and I care about neighborhoods. I have friends that do live in this community, and that's the reason why I'm here. All those who are opposed to this rezoning, would you please stand?
And, sir, your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Teresa Willis-Napp. And, ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and citizens. My name is Teresa L. Willis-Napp. I run a home which is adjacent to 303 Bedford Court from my father, Wayne Willis. I am opposed to rezoning application Z-1801 for many reasons, some of which, well, I will speak about tonight. They include increased crime, the physical well-being of myself, my husband, my neighbors, and those who travel in and through our neighborhood, possibly being sold out by big business or the political machine, helping to protect my daddy's retirement investment, and so much hard work that he had to do for more than 60 years to achieve it. He invested in homes so that he could invest in Portsmouth families, so they could have single-family homes instead of living in beehives, and let them have their own yard that their kids can play in. And that, the money from renting those homes is his retirement. So it's impacting the city in some pretty good and positive ways. Many businesses that are included under light industrial and general mixed-use classifications, and the one at the top is an adult bookstore. I mean, I don't know if you've looked at the list, but it can, some of those places, it's like, oh, my goodness, I sure hope that doesn't get put there. And also concerned about the impact any zoning change from general residential will have on our unique community. The proposed land use pattern is not compatible transition to the adjacent residential areas. The property is surrounded to the immediate west by our longstanding Portsmouth Acres residential development. There is no demonstrated community need for anything other than general residential at this site. This application does not result in a logical and orderly development pattern in this location. Many of the things I just mentioned are in the comprehensive plan, and it says that it's supposed to go along with those things, and it's not. So I didn't want to take up a lot of your time, so I thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. I implore you to please deny Z-1801 application, as well as any future request to rezon this property. Please keep this general residential. I hope you have a good rest of your week, and a wonderful, safe, and happy Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is John Prairie, and if I mispronounce your name, I'm sorry. If you'll come to the lectern, you have five minutes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for having your time out here tonight with us, and thank you for the support of Portsmouth for being here. Okay, my name is John Prairie. My family and I reside at 300 Bedford Court, which is exactly, this is the view I see right now from my front door.
Sir, can you speak on the mic?
I'm sorry. Is this better? Okay, this is the view you would see from my front door right here, okay? This has been my home for the past, our home, for the past 13 years. When I first purchased the home, I was working day shifts, and there was another house across the street, okay, it was already standing, at 303 Bedford. Anyways, not long after I moved in, I moved to night shift, and I was shocked to see how much traffic came past that house in the morning and early evening hours from people commuting back to industrial park, okay? And it made it difficult for me to rest, but since that time, I returned back to working day shift, and I have a new addition to my family, my six-year-old granddaughter, okay? She loves outdoors, and she has her friends over, and neighbors, and visitors from other neighborhoods, and she likes to ride her bicycle, and she's still on training wheels. She's still trying to learn, you know, to ride her bicycle. Also, I have two dogs and a cat, okay? We like to walk our dogs through there as well. I've almost been hit several times by delivery trucks coming through there, mostly FedEx. Anyways, I also own the property at 213 Bedford, which is the other side of the pump house there, to the left. And my neighbor there, he has a pair of twins, little girls, they're nine, two years old. And if he blinks his eye, they sometimes run to the street, and he freaks out. It's kind of nerve-wracking, okay, for the traffic there, okay? Anyways, also, we have a lot of people do U-turns. They come in off the traffic light there, and they'll do a U-turn at Garwood and Bedford Anyways, then also saying Luckstone now, since they've moved in there, they want to move 52 dump trucks a day of gravel from their facility in and out past my house. Like you say, there's only one way to get in that industrial park, and that's coming in front of my house, okay? And also, we have several marble places back there, and those trucks haul in marble and granite constantly. They're heavy vehicles. I mean, it's not easy to stop them, okay? Proposed light industrial zoning poses a greater threat for my safe haven, and our safe haven in our community that we all treasure. And recently, I put an addition on my house. My mother was in bad shape, and she was, you know, ill, so she can move in with us if we can take care of her. And my property taxes went sky-high when I did this, and I pay them all the time. And I believe this proposal will actually put a decline to the value of my home and our homes in that neighborhood, being it's like that. And, you know, us members of the community out there, we believe it's one of Portsmouth's best-kept secrets as far as the location is. I mean, I myself have lived in Portsmouth since 1980, never knew it was even there. You blink your eye, you'd miss it. But it's a nice little community there, it's good location, right next to the interstate, easy in and out. Also, we have a senior living facility right here in the orange, and these people have motorized wheelchairs that they sometimes use. motorized wheelchairs that they sometimes use to go to Food Lion, to purchase their groceries and such, and they don't move too fast. Traffic is a big concern for me. Also, to me, the threat of increased crime, traffic, noise, light, and litter pollution will only increase. If this project is approved, I'd like to know if the city of Portsmouth will be able to stand behind at the aftermath, to take care of drainage, which would be mosquitoes more, street declines such as potholes, easements, and sewer maintenance. We also experience problems with this pump house there on the left. Sometimes they had to have trucks come in 24 hours a day, it seemed like pumping out, because what I understand is there's a pipe running under the interstate that got crushed. I haven't seen them lately, but they have a problem with that pump house there. I'm running out of time. Anyways, the grade of that property is real low. If you really notice it, it drops down. They'll have to bring a lot of earth in, and I'm concerned with the drainage as well, and mosquitoes and such as that. I don't want to be a victim of this. I love Portsmouth. I've been here since 1980, lived here in the early '70s as well, and I've seen Portsmouth, it seems like back then, we had every new car dealership you can think of in Portsmouth, and now it's just kind of declined, and I don't want to see it decline any further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Jerry Willis, and sir, you have five minutes.
If you were speaking to the microphone, please. Good evening, mayor, council. Want to talk to you about what's going on with this thing. And first thing, for everyone to keep in mind, that money's important. It's important to the applicant, important to the city, but money isn't everything. We have a nice, quiet neighborhood. We'd sure like to keep it that way. No one in our neighborhood can see what rezoning this is going to be a benefit to our neighborhood. We can only see it to be a decline, and so we would ask that you would leave the zoning the way it is and let us continue. And another thing about what the applicant said about drainage, we didn't have a drainage problem in our neighborhood on Lee Dale until after the new construction. So that seems kind of strange, you know? What's with that? All right? And then our roads are small. We don't have very big roads in our neighborhood, and there's no sidewalks in our neighborhood with the exception of up there on that new construction at Bedford Place. And so there's nowhere for folks to walk on a sidewalk to escape all this traffic coming through. And let's see, can I tell you a little bit about the traffic here? Let's see, all right, here it is. Motorists are shortcutting through our neighborhood. We have frequent accidents both at Bedford Court and Garwood Avenue, using, again, that's a shortcut. And then we have so many, Luckstone, that there is, they have like 52 loads coming in and out through our neighborhood, like the applicant said. That's the only way they can get in to the industrial park of where they are, to come in by means of our neighborhood. They can go out the other way, right on Greenwood, but it can only come in into our neighborhood, breaking the roads down, all that kind of stuff. And we already have more than our share of traffic in our neighborhood already. We certainly don't need any more that would come from another business, also with another business, more hard surface, more water runoff that's going to cause more trouble that we sure don't need that neither. And let's see here. Like for everyone to think about this, that how would you like for this to be moved in to your neighborhood? Like, you like your neighborhood the way it is right now. How would you like all this change to be dumped on you? That, like you say, in our neighborhood, we can't see any benefit to our neighborhood from rezoning this. Money isn't everything, for sure, it isn't everything. And the zoning can stay the same, residential can be built there. The applicant wouldn't make as much money, yes, the city wouldn't make as much money on taxes, but there still would be some money to go around, and it would not be devastating to our neighborhood to leave the zoning where it is, to leave it residential. And we really believe that is how it should stay, and also there is the possibility of more crime coming in, you know? I know everybody wants to think about facts, but, you know, you see things like yourself, and you deserve, well, you wouldn't see, how did this ever go so wrong? You would have never thought that this could have turned out this way, but it does. And so, again, we would just ask you to please leave the zoning where it is and keep it residential. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Wayne Willis, and sir, you have five minutes.
Yes, I'm Wayne Willis, and I'm president of Portland Thager's Neighborhood Watch. And I do own a house on the corner that my daughter lives in, right on the corner of Garwood and Bedford Court. And in reference to the proposed zoning that's in question, Z-1801, I want to express some of the aspects that are very disturbing to our residents and neighborhood. If the rezoning proposal is approved, we may be faced with many of the same types of problems left upon us by the same applicant from his last project in our neighborhood, which he denies, of course. Now, if he gets your help, he will have a free hand to leave us with as many problems as he desires, and he can say, it's not my problem, see the person I sold it to. Then the buyer can place almost any business there within the code. The applicant's last project, I mention that for a reason, last project in our community was at Bedford Court and Airline Boulevard. Council approved 10 houses there, and it turns out that they built 13 there. And the builder installed a sidewalk and a curbing on Lee Dale Avenue. However, he set the drainage grade in the wrong direction of the original grade, which has created a huge flooding problem. I contacted Bill Moody and Fred Brusso, and they both came out and looked at it at different times, and they saw the drainage problem. Now, Bill did say, I'll look into the problem, and I hesitate to say what I think, but I'll say it anyway. I guess he's still looking. So with these grade changes, the house at 4014 Lee Dale Avenue floods in the owner's driveway and the front yard and the entire block on both sides of the street. Now, we denied that problem before. We got it now, and you guys haven't done anything about it. So we are a little disturbed about that. And the guy that owns the house, I have a letter from him showing that his complaints to the city, had complaints with the city. They came out and looked, said there's nothing wrong with it, but I've got a picture right here I can show you, showing that there is problems, there are problems, and he received no help. And I have mentioned these facts because it has been previously demonstrated by the same applicant that we can't trust the applicant to do right by us. He doesn't care a thing. Well, I understand what the way millionaires are, squish the little guy. Also, it would seem that the city has earned some degree of untrustworthyness by not following up with us, to help us out in our community concerning this matter. If you approve this action, who will remedy the problems that will surely arise afterwards? Shall we be left a hole in the bag again? I'm concerned about robberies that are rampant at convenience stores. We also fear the safety of our elderly and disabled pedestrians coming from the seniors' home while trying to avoid large trucks and many cars. Now, these problems aren't here. They're only going to get worse. That's our point. My daughter, who lives across the street, uses a worker and a cane, and she has a time getting around. Traffic will worsen if rezoned. We know through his previous actions, we cannot trust this applicant. Once he achieves this zoning, he will do what he wants to. He will sell to whomever he wants with no regard for the harm to our neighborhood. He states it is not feasible to place houses there, which only means, in our opinion, he can reap a larger profit by rezoning this property to general mixed or light-use industrial. But we say, please listen to what the people say, keep the current zoning, general residential, and place only single-family homes there. Please deny this application, and please don't contribute to the demise of our community just because the city needs more revenue. How would each of you feel, you as in living in our little, small neighborhood, and they did this to you? What are you going to do? Just say, well, the city needs more money? Let's get it, let him have it. He'll spend the money well, sure. How would you feel about that? How about if it's happening to a family member of yours? And so also, I don't know if you want to see it or not. I have a letter from that, but I can show you some of the, one picture here, you can pass it around if it's permissible of this flooding. So I'll pass that around, and we'll see what happens.
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you'll give that to... Our next speaker is Gregory Hines, and sir, you have five minutes.
My name is Gregory Hines. I'm a retired naval officer. I moved into this community about approximately two years, almost to the day. Prior to purchasing my house, I noticed this neighborhood was really quaint, really back in a corner, really quiet. So I purchased the home, and within, I really do like this neighborhood. I'm concerned that if they put, if this is rezoned, that something will be put there that will add to the traffic problem we have. My being there only two years, I've already noticed and almost gotten hit by people running stop sign there on Bedford. I've gotten articles stolen from my property, only a couple things, though. I've put up a fence so that kind of keeps people out of my yard, but I'm concerned about the added traffic to our small neighborhood, which will in turn more than likely increase There's already too many big trucks that come through. The pavement and the roads that I have to travel to get back to my house are already at a condition to where they need repaired already, patching them, whatever the case I just ask you, please, please deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is David Mitchell, and sir, you have five minutes.
David Mitchell, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I don't know what else I can say to you. I know you share a map over here. It doesn't do it justice. That road in front of John's house is a lot narrower than that. That must be the right-of-way map. That's not what the road looks like. I've seen a truck over there broke down in front of John's house last week, and almost had 20 accidents in a half an hour. Trucks going in, and trucks going out, people not paying attention. If you're going to approve this, you need to, cities got to do their homework and improve the roads and then do some traffic studies, because you've got tractor-trailers coming in off of Greenwood into the neighborhood, and people have to back up all the time so they can get into, so the tractors can get in. Most of them are good drivers, the tractor-trailer drivers, but they need a turn lane on Greenwood Drive both directions, and the road is just too narrow for more traffic. It's not, it's too narrow for the traffic you've got now. All righty, I guess that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next registered speaker is Lauren Knapp. And you have five minutes.
Thanks, sir. All right, Mr. Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens. My name is Lauren Knapp, and I live on Bedford Court there in Portsmouth Acres. I am opposed to Zulu Tac 18 Tac 01. Yeah, I'm a military guy, retired. I'm not going to bore you with numbers and statistics and all that. I just, I would plead with you to look at the human factor. Set your pocketbooks and your wallets aside. Look at the human factor. What I want to address is the strong possibility of a rise in crime that could happen and probably will happen in our quiet and serene neighborhood if a convenience store is placed there. Now, I don't, at 303 Bedford. Now, I don't know about you, but I've gone to various convenience stores to get gas or go and get a donut or whatever, and I've seen individuals loitering outside of the convenience store. What is so interesting about loitering outside a convenience store? I have no idea. But I've had people out there seeing them begging. I've seen them out there, maybe they're possibly casing the place. I don't know. But that's something to keep in mind. If you do have a convenience store there, there is a possibility of then you're going to have more people standing outside, just standing there. Again, are they casing the place? Are they just standing there begging, or are they acting like they're begging and they're actually casing the place? Also, robbers and burglars, they prefer convenience. If I have to break into a place compared to, oh, here's money, I'll just grab it and go, they're going to take the grab-it-and-go. If a robbery occurs, where is this individual going to flee? Are they going to flee over to Food Lion? No, because if they go into Food Lion, chances are, they can get locked in there. People get and catch them. Are they going to run to the industries? No, they're going to go where there's more cover, and where is there more cover? Our neighborhood. They're going to flee into our neighborhood to get away from the police or deputy sheriffs that come running after them. So with that in mind, then they notice that there's a neighborhood back there. So then they go back to their buddies, and next thing you know, you've got more individuals coming into our neighborhood to rob our places. They probably have more break-ins. I've had a lot of people tell me, I've had friends of mine that drove me to home from work because my truck broke down, and they dropped me off, and they're like, wow, I didn't know there was a neighborhood back here. Oh, this is neat. So now you've got these individuals that may flee the convenience store from robbing it into our neighborhood. Now they see an opportunity for more robbing. Now we've got more problems. Also, my wife, Teresa, she has some medical issues and whatnot. She has to be very careful when she's out and about, and with increased traffic along Bedford where people don't want to hit the lights, they come zooming through there. I've seen various people not stopping at the stop sign. One time I was going to work and almost got hit because somebody wasn't paying attention to the stop sign. Also, with you start the construction out there, and I understand if you do start construction, there's going to be all kinds of noise and trucks and bulldozers and whatever else, but our quiet neighborhood is going to be overtaken with that, and then you've got the delivery trucks coming in when the place is built. You've got the trucks backing up, that beep-beep noise that they always make, which is, you know, good that they have it, but then again, in our neighborhood, people are trying to sleep, maybe they got a job that they work at night. I know I do at times, and that noise will wake me up real quick. Basically, what I want to say is this, please, we're humans back there. We're families. We're friends. Please oppose Zulu Tac 18 Tac 01. We've got plenty of convenience stores around us. We don't need another one, and we definitely do not need an adult bookstore or anything like that in there. A house could be put in there, maybe even a small park. Thank you for your time. Have a good day. Have a good day.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on proffered rezoning request Z-18-01. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this matter? Please come to the lectern, and you'll have five minutes. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Dorothy Flowers, and I live at 204 Bedford Court in Portsmouth Acres. I've come here tonight to ask you to vote no to the rezoning of 303 Bedford Court on your docket as Z-1801. I'm not here because the decision you're gonna make is gonna fill my pockets, some lawyer or developer pockets with cash, but it's gonna preserve a way of life that many of us can remember as kids. My reason for asking you to say no is right in front of you. The safety of my grandchildren and all the kids that live and reside in Portsmouth Acres, including those of us who have to rely on walkers, canes, motorized chairs to get from point A to point B, many of which uses your public transportation located at Bedford Court and Airline Boulevard. It is not uncommon to see a number of our residents walking or using some form of medical device to get into and from the many local businesses we have on the outside of our neighborhood. Our residents also walk a dog, ride a bike, or even walk for exercise at various times in the day. In the warmer months, many will come down Bedford Court, riding a bike or walking with their families. By allowing a business to be built there and increasing the traffic flow, you not only add a greater danger to these folks, but you take away a life that's become extinct in most neighborhoods. Portsmouth Acres is like stepping back in time. It's a place where neighbors from different walks of life still stop by, say hello, and have a chat for a while. It's a place where kids can feel safe at home. It's a place where gangs, domestic violence, and drugs have not yet become a problem. Many Portsmouth residents do not even know it existed, and I was once one of them. I was looking for a house to buy, and I found one in this neighborhood. It was like stepping back in time. But all this would change if you allow a business to go there, especially a convenience store. Also, regardless of what some of you will be led to believe, there are sections of Bedford Court where two cars cannot pass each other. I deal with one of these sections every day, walking my granddaughter to and from the bus stop. I have almost been hit on a number of occasions where vehicles are using that road as a cut through. We have, we either have a lot, the city has tried to help. They came out and put a no-through sign, but we either have a lot of drivers who can't read or they just ignore it. So I have no doubt, if you put a business there, they too, too, will chose to ignore that sign. The last reason is the location. Let's just say a business is robbed there. Then we have the risk of them coming into our neighborhood, or if they're in a vehicle fleeting down Bedford Court to get away. There's always, there has already been a number of robberies in our area. Do we really need to add another problem to the mix? I do like to point out that when the property owner bought this property, he knew it was zoned for residential. So why not build a couple houses on it? Either sell them or rent them. They've already built several at the under end of Bedford Court, and they sold. So I have no doubt in my mind that if they build a couple more, these too will sell. I also believe if you allow a business there, it's going to cause the city a lot of headaches, not to mention cash. The only person I could see who will benefit from this rezoning is a property owner, his lawyer, and a developer. I thank you for listening to me today, and I ask, and I beg you, not to let this rezoning go through, to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker, please, come to the lectern and state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, and honorable members of the council. My name is Herschel Patel. I live in Chesapeake, but we, me and my father is in the audience. We are the, my father is the owner and the operator of Red One Food Store right across the street from where they want to build a convenience store. All the, all these speakers before me have mentioned the concerns that, of their concerns of, of a convenience store being built there. I also agree with the same concerns, not to mention every, every, it has been three times ever since we took over in 2013, that the Electric City Pole that is on that intersection has been struck down by an accident, and it cuts power throughout the neighborhood and our store, which is, which has been problematic. Secondly, I would also like to mention that we, and there, there are two other convenience stores in walking distance from our store. And all three of us have been very successful in meeting the customers' needs. There is no, there hasn't been any unhappy customers or a customer that went, went back without getting something from our stores. So I kindly request the motion, I kindly request to dismiss the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speaker that would like to speak either for or against on this matter? This is a public hearing. You do not have to be pre-registered to speak. If you desire to speak, please come to the lectern, and we'll give you five minutes. This is a rezoning, a public hearing on application Z-18-01. No further speakers. This public hearing is closed. So that we can consider this matter on its first reading, is there a motion? There's a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a motion to approve that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I just want to make sure we're clear. Are we voting to approve the recommendation of the planning commission? Is that what this is? Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear, 'cause of the applicant. Okay.
Everybody understand the question and the answer. The question was, what is the nature of the motion? The nature of the motion is to approve this rezoning request. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Here are none. Ready for the vote? All in favor, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, this passes on first reading. Which brings us to item 18-196. And Madam Clerk, this is the consideration of an ordinance. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a supplemental local emergency management performance grant in the amount of $6,330 from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Engineering to purchase, maintain, and install flood sensors.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to adopt that's been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 18-197, which is the consideration of a resolution. Would you read the caption of the resolution?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the grant of utility access and related easements to Atlantic Coast Pipeline LLC encumbering certain property owned by the City of Portsmouth and located in Chesapeake and Suffolk.
As I stated earlier, because I do own a small amount of Dominion Resources stock, I'm recusing myself from this matter, and will turn the gavel over to the Vice Mayor. Councilman Smith, did you ask to be recognized?
Yes, thank you. And I will be abstaining also for the reason of being an employee of Dominion Energy.
Okay, I just turned the gavel over to the Vice Mayor.
Did I hear, is there a motion on the table?
Second.
Been duly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Please vote electronically. Oops. I'm about to have it. We're gonna vote again, please. And that motion carries with two abstentions.
Thank you, and I'll assume the gavel back. This brings us to new business, item 18-198, boards and commissions. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. There are no boards and commission items to discuss tonight.
Thank you. Which brings us to items submitted by council members, and the chair recognizes Vice Mayor
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to take from the table an ordinance regarding school funding that was tabled at the previous council meeting.
Is that in form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second to the motion?
Circle.
Okay, we have a motion that's been made to remove an item that was tabled at the last council meeting pertaining to the transfer of school funds. It's been duly seconded. This is a non-debatable motion. So, ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And this motion has been passed. Now that it's back on the, before us, is there, would you read the caption of the ordinance, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the transfer of $857,500 between classifications and the overall and fourth quarterly FY 2018 Portsmouth Public Schools' general operating budgets.
Okay, so that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to, on this matter?
Move for approval.
Second. Okay. The motion is to approve. We're now open for discussion. The chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
First of all, just a point of order, I just want to make sure, what is the motion we moved to take from the table, item 18-177? And so what is this, what is this motion?
It's back on the agenda. It was tabled at the last meeting.
Right.
It was a ordinance. It was tabled, the motion was to take it from the table. That motion carried, so it's back before us.
Right.
Now, for us to consider it, we have to have a motion.
Right. I understand. I just want to make sure the language of the motion, because it was just said, "So moved." I just want to make sure, are we moving to approve Agenda Item 18-177?
That's my motion.
That's her motion, that's Councilwoman Lucas Burke's motion?
Yes, it is, sir.
The motion is to approve the adoption of the ordinance that was read by the clerk. Do what? Read the caption of the ordinance again.
Mayor, the...
Just read the caption of the ordinance.
I can't find it. I just took it away. I just took mine away. Okay. Yes. An ordinance authorizing the transfer of $857,500 between classifications and the overall and fourth quarter FY 2018 Portsmouth Public Schools' general fund operating budgets.
And the motion was to adopt that ordinance, and it was duly seconded. Now it's before us, and the chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I move that the following amendment be added to the ordinance, and that's the funds transferred shall be used only for goods purchased and delivered on or before June the 30th, 2018, or for services performed on or before June the 30th, 2018.
You're making that as a form of a motion to amend the original motion so that the ordinance is amended per what you just read?
That is correct.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, we have before us a motion to amend the original motion, which is to add additional language, and would you read that language again?
That the funds so transferred shall be used only for goods purchased and delivered on or before June the 30th, 2018, or for services performed on or before June the 30th, 2018.
Okay. We're discussing the amendment to the motion. The chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I oppose the amendment. That was why I was trying to get clarity on the exact language of the motion. As the citizens know, the school board has to come before council here to get funds transferred from one classification category to another. At our last council meeting, it was shared by the mayor, and it was voted on by the council that the funding for the schools be non-categoryal. And it was mentioned that this is the right move to develop a sense of trust between the school board and city council. I find it problematic that here we are talking about developing trust, and now we're putting in language of mistrust and adding in language that is unnecessary, burdensome, punitive and vindictive. I think that the language here handicaps the school system, and also it is not within the language that the city attorney read to us at our last meeting. This extra language of purchased and delivered on or before June the 30th, that's not the language that the city attorney read to us from the state law. And so I'm, I'm having an issue with this council placing this type of requirement. Also, my question to Dr. Patton, given that this language has been added, how does this apply now to the $1 million that was appropriated to the schools for security purposes? Does that mean now that those funds have to be spent and the security items have to be delivered by June the 30th?
Dr. Patton?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, this does not impact the $1 million for school safety, which we have already been meeting, determined, put in place with both of the procurement officers working together for the work to be completed before the school year, but that money is a part of CIP.
Right, but those, those funds will not be spent, nor will services be delivered by June the 30th.
It's in the CIP fund and not in the general fund.
And so what's the, what's the difference? What's the difference in the requirement?
Mayor, if you may, I'll have Mrs. Suet to come up and answer that.
Please come to the lectern.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Your CIP fund actually rolls forward year to year, does not cease at June 30th. So by putting those dollars in that fund, it is available beyond the June 30th date.
Okay, thank you. And my other question, what about if there is a delay in delivery of items, goods that will not arrive prior to June 30th? Does that mean that that does not meet the requirement?
Do you want to answer that question?
What are you asking me, Dr. Whitaker?
What if the school board orders items, and the order does not get in prior to June the 30th because of a delay?
Are you speaking of the CIP items of which?
No, no, I'm speaking of the items that we're voting on, this $857,500 transfer. What if that is used to purchase goods, as said by the language here? The goods are purchased, it requires... The goods are purchased, it requires them to be purchased and delivered by June the thirtieth. What if the item is purchased but is not delivered by June the thirtieth because of a delay by the vendor?
Right, I yield to the CFO.
Sure, it would be required that the delivery would take place prior to the June thirtieth to meet the letter of this, of this ordinance. That is also a requirement through the reporting requirements for financial reporting, all goods and services must be received before June thirtieth in order to be included in that year's accounting, so that's...
Well, you know, there's been a debate over encumbered, but that's not the question I'm asking, the question I'm asking is, what if the item is purchased by the school board? And according to the language here, it must be delivered by June the thirtieth, what if there is a delay by the vendor in getting the item to the school board?
If it is not delivered by the June thirtieth deadline, then it would not be a part of that funding.
Right, and that's, that means, that means the school board would have to now turn funds back over to the city, that it has already contracted with a vendor to pay, when it was not the responsibility of the school board that caused that delay?
It's customary, when you make those orders, that you, part of your requirement is that those funds, is that those goods be delivered by the date, that's on the vendor to deliver those goods by that date.
Right, but we know that things could happen where that may not happen, you're saying now that would be the burden on, the burden on the school board to turn those funds back over to the city?
I would say it would be the burden on the vendor.
The vendor, the vendor would have already been paid, the items were not delivered.
You don't pay for the goods until they're delivered, so if you've requested items, if you've ordered items to be delivered before June thirtieth, and they're not delivered before June thirtieth, I would say you wouldn't pay the vendor, you never...
So the school board, the school board only pays upon delivery?
That's correct, that's what they should be doing, you don't pay until you've received the goods or services.
Okay, this, this language here is not, as I said, is not consistent with the law that the city attorney, I think that it is burdensome, it is unnecessary for us to place this requirement. Also, we do know the school board has a, an internal one hundred and twenty day policy, and so I, I'm in total disagreement with this amended language. And I just wanna remind the citizens again that the purpose of this has nothing to do with the delivery of goods. This is the city, the city council majority, once again, trying to attack education by now telling the school system that these funds should be used for teacher salaries. And as we know, that is a, a bad policy, I'm totally against that, and I hope the citizens are conscious of, once again, this attack on our school system.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Yes, I would like, just for the public's knowledge, if we could get a clarification on encumbered funds and their use before June thirtieth?
Dr. Patton?
So the encumbrance of funds occurs at the point of ordering, and the encumbrance simply means that you are setting aside the dollars for which you have placed an order, and reserving them in abeyance until such time as the goods and services are delivered, and then you make payment. It's customary with every governmental entity that the fiscal year ends on June thirtieth, goods and services, even for the city, have to be received before June thirtieth in order to be included in that year's accounting, it's the same thing for the school board.
Dr. Whitaker, wait a minute, let's, you've had the floor, is anybody else who has not spoken wanna speak on this matter? Dr. Whitaker, you've got the floor.
Once, once again, in, in your scenario, it doesn't address a delay by a vendor in getting goods that is beyond the vendor's control. If there's a delay and the goods are not delivered by June the thirtieth, then according to this standard, those funds would have to be returned back to the city, and this council would have to reappropriate those. And I think that this, once again, is not in line with what the city attorney interpreted to us at our last meeting.
I, I can only say that if, you know, on the city's part, when we place an order, and we know that the funds are only available if they are received before, if the goods and services are received before June thirtieth, that becomes part of the order.
Right, but the city doesn't, the city doesn't have to return...
Dr. Whitaker, please don't argue.
The city doesn't have to return the funds back like the school does, so that's not a good analogy.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion on the motion, the motion is to amend the original motion, you may be seated. Any further discussion, we'll consider the amendment to the motion, all in favor of the amended motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And that motion carries, so we'll now consider the motion as amended, which is to adopt the ordinance with the language that was read. Any discussion on the amended motion, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. And that motion carries, which brings us to, again, items submitted by council members, the Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Simmons.
Yes, sir, thank you, it's a busy weekend in the city, as we come up on Memorial Day weekend and Emoja weekend, lots of things are happening before we meet again. This coming weekend begins the twenty-eighth annual Emoja Festival, it will take place in Festival Park at the Union Trust and Bank, Bank and Trust Pavilion, beginning this Friday, May twenty-fifth through Sunday, May twenty-seventh. I'll note that the concert that was rescheduled for Saturday night, that we do have a replacement concert Saturday night, that will be out in Festival Park, Grammy-winning Regina Bell will be singing, that's a free event from the Emoja stage out in Festival Park. On Saturday morning, there is the Elizabeth River Run ten K through Old Town, beginning at seven forty-five in the morning. And then, of course, Sunday, we continue Emoja Festival activities, and on Monday, Memorial Day, the twenty-eighth, at ten AM, we have the one hundred and thirty-fourth Annual Memorial Day Parade. It will kick off at ten AM at Norcom High School on High Street, and head east down high all the way to Crawford. The reviewing stands will be at High and Court Street, where we'll have lots of folks from the military, the grand marshal this year, will be representing Naval Medical Center Portsmouth, and we're looking forward to that. I will also tell you that, following that, on June the second, the following Saturday is Clean the Bay Day, and we have lots of volunteer opportunities at City Park, beginning at eight o'clock in the morning. On Wednesday, June the sixth, remember, we are one of the eleven officially designated Coast Guard cities in the United States, and the Coast Guard Band will be putting on a free concert, free concert, at Willett Hall on Wednesday, June sixth, at seven PM. And then on Thursday, June seventh, we begin the Sunset Thursday concerts, again, for the summer season, but this year, they will be moving to High Street Landing. There will be construction beginning at the former Portside location for the Newport side later in the month of June, so all of the Sunset Thursday concerts will now be at the foot of High Street, at High Street Landing, beginning at six thirty PM. The first one is June the seventh, and the band looks like it might be the Original Rondells or Soul and Tent, the Original Rondells, thank you, Mr. Pace. And the following weekend, June eighth, the night, is the Seawall Festival in conjunction with Harbor Fest on the Norfolk side. The Seawall Festival will also be at the foot of High Street, at High Street Landing. On Friday night, we have the Original Rondells and Soul and Tent, on Saturday night, we have a nationally recognized band named Heat Wave, who will be playing, so lots of things going on, you can always go to portsvaevents.com to get all that that I just said.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, two items, first, the city managers report back on the comparison of superintendent salaries. Just want to, once again, since this is a public document, Dr. Patton, the information that's in here is inconsistent, because it is reporting on salaries, and some of these are benefits. And the information regarding the Portsmouth Public Schools Superintendent, that information includes his benefits. And the other items, as we read in your report, whoever put it together, it does not indicate that it is solely salary, or if it's salary and benefits. Matter of fact, in some areas, it just says salary, so there's, there still appears to be some inconsistencies in the report.
Thank you. You want to respond?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, the information of which I provided, and Dr. Whitaker speaks, salaries are defined as all monies that are received for work. In each of the FY two thousand nineteen budget books, for the cities of which we provided that information, the amounts of money listed under, for each superintendent, the amounts of money are listed under the title of salaries. Every sheet that you have comes exactly out of those, City of Portsmouth, City of Hampton, City of Newport News, City of Chesapeake, all of those come out of the budget book, and they're defined in the budget books as the heading is salaries.
Right, I, I have no doubt that the heading is salary, my point is just that the salary for, I know the Portsmouth Superintendent, that that is not just pure salary, that includes benefits. Whereas for some of the other superintendents, that may represent just their salary, and so there are still some inconsistencies. I believe probably the best thing for the staff to have done is actually review the contracts, if the comparisons that you're trying to make would be more accurate in that sense.
Thank you. You, you said you had two items?
Yes, the, the other is if there's no objection from council, I request that council direct the city manager to provide a recommendation to council on eliminating the Monday public work sessions for June, July, and August. And that is because the staff, and also the council itself, these are vacation months, and I would like to hear from the city manager to see if it's feasible, and how that would work just for the summer months, so that it would give staff some time off as well.
I don't support that, our most valuable time is our time together, we got a huge workload, and you asked for concurrence, I do not concur, what about the rest of council? There is no concurrence. Thank you.
Let's try to help the staff.
Thank you. This brings us to report on pending items, Dr. Patton, do we have any pending items?
We have no pending items.
Which brings us to non-agenda speakers, and we have several, the first speaker is Pam Phillips, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, and other members of city council, my name is Pamela J. Phillips, and I live in the Parkview neighborhood of Portsmouth. I wanted to speak today about my displeasure of city councils not approving the additional one point nine million dollars to increase the school board's fiscal year two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen budget. At the approved budget, Portsmouth Schools have a budget of a hundred and forty-five point three million dollars. This budget is actually, is the amount of ten thousand one hundred and thirty-four, thirty-five dollars per student, and is the lowest level of funding in the South Side for Hampton Roads. Norfolk is funded at ten thousand seven hundred and three dollars, Virginia Beach is funded at eleven thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars per student, Chesapeake is funded at eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars per student. If you take, if you, for us to keep up with Norfolk's funding at the per-student level, we are eight point one million dollars of less funded. And then, twenty point six million dollars lower than Chesapeake, which is the region's go-to system for parents looking for a good education for their children. We, as the city, have to invest in education of the children if we want to attract business in our cash-strapped city. The school systems are some of the first criteria that gets looked at when new locations or moving home offices are considered. Portsmouth has additional challenges in being an urban city, with most of the children going to Portsmouth Schools being at or below the two hundred thousand, or the two hundred percent poverty level. Each early childhood development book that I know of states that for urban cities with high levels of poverty, that the children, that the schools have to be funded at higher levels to mitigate the socio-economical impacts that the children face. This is not my first time coming before and speaking to the council about issues that I've seen in the community, or with progressive ideas on how to move the city forward. On July twenty-fifth of two thousand seventeen, I presented an idea of a small amusement park, which, with a large Ferris wheel as the focal point. That idea fell on deaf ears that night, but was well-received by Norfolk, as we can see that they have just completed construction of their Ferris wheel at Waterside. The key to economic growth for our city is progressive thinking and, and education. We have to be the city that's not afraid to think outside our box, to bring people into our wonderful city while supporting our youngest residents. I do not mean to be disrespectful or seek free publicity, but my name is Pamela J. Phillips, and I'm running for city council. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes, go ahead, incidente. The Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Ms. Phillips?
You can come back to the floor.
I'm sorry.
First of all, I wanna commend you for fighting for education, I think the teachers and the employees did deserve the pay increase. Just wanna say there is some conversation up at the General Assembly regarding a possible three percent increase in the education budget. However, just want to mind, remind the citizens that that three percent will only apply to SOQ positions, those minimal positions, it will not apply to all school employees. Which means now that the school board is gonna have to come up with an additional three percent for those employees that are not covered under the state budget increase, which will be an additional cost. And so, we must continue to push for a council to adequately and progressively support public education. And so, I, I thank you for that, and hopefully, we will try to move in the right directions and fund our schools as they should be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sergio Neal, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council and the public, my name is Sergio Neal, I live at fifteen sixty Darren Circle here in the city of Portsmouth. The topic I wanted to come to you all about tonight was leadership, and some of the personal attacks that have happened with our leadership, you know, I, I feel very disheartened and very hurt that certain members of our community lash out at our elected bodies when they don't agree with the decisions that are made. First and foremost, whether you were appointed to a body, or whether you were elected to a body, you are there for a reason, and that reason is to represent the citizens of Portsmouth. However, there are varying degrees of opinions in how that representation should look like. And some of the professional backgrounds, you may know more than some of the citizens do when it comes to certain topics, that doesn't mean you're pro or anti anything. When, on the topic of education... On the topic of education, as a person that's running for school board in this city, let me be very, very clear on this. Yes, our teachers and staff deserve a raise. However, I know, for me, if I'm elected to the school board, my first thing as a director, as the direct employer of those individuals, I'm going to do all I can on my end to make sure that if the city does not have the money, that we make sure that we prioritize our teachers and staff to make sure that we get that right first before we do anything else. That means on top of spending things on money unnecessarily, on things like consultants, how much is, a 367% increase in consultants is crazy. But we want to talk about the city not doing their part to fund the, the teachers and staff raise. Let's look at what, we have to hold ourselves accountable too. So we, there is a two-sided street to this story, and for people to come before the council and parade on the steps and not tell the whole story about the school system, I find that to be very disrespectful, and I think it's pathetic. I, I really think that, that both elected bodies have to, if you want to find people to represent the city on the citizen's side, which should be everybody, then it can't be people that is going to tell only half the story. This is why Portsmouth stays in the news for a bunch of drama and a bunch of negativity, and I, I really feel it's sad. I work in Virginia Beach, but yet every day I hear the same story. What is going on with Portsmouth? What is wrong with Portsmouth? Why can't we fix our elected bodies? And that's, that's, that kills me. I was born literally in, on the floor in this city at home, and, and I, I fight for my city every day, but I, I would not fight for people that cause our city to have a bad label and a, and a bad representation in the media and in the mindsets of other elected bodies in this city, I mean, in this region. Portsmouth, it shouldn't be Hampton Roads and then Portsmouth, it should be Hampton Roads altogether. Yes, we have all unique challenges, but at the same time too, we should have more similarity than uniqueness. We should be, it shouldn't be, oh, we go to Virginia Beach and it's fine, we go to Chesapeake and it's fine, we go to Norfolk and it's fine, you come to Portsmouth, oh my God. Because you got to worry about the people that claim that they are pastors parading on the steps, calling people out their name, acting like a fool. That is disrespectful, and it doesn't make sense. I don't know how we could continue to put up with stuff like that in this city. We don't need that. We can disagree all day long. Councilman Moody and I had words on Twitter about a situation that happened with a protest, yet still, I can still shake his hand and smile because I'm not, because I know for a fact that one thing I can say about him, he's true to what he's believing in. Councilman Lucas Burke has never been disrespectful ever since she's been elected. Opponent council member Ray Smith has, he's there for a reason because obviously somebody believed in him, because guess what? Nobody else got there but him. So apparently, he's doing something right in this city. So when we want to go and throw personal attacks in the mix and make our city look bad, think about what we do to our citizens, because we have to, every day, go out in the workforce and, and defend our city. What is wrong with your city? Why can't you all get it right? And that's unfair to the people that live here. It's unfortunate, we have a few people that make the news every time, trying to throw shade and throw people under the bus, but have not done a thing to improve this city. Yes, as you can tell by my tone of voice, I'm a little upset because I know full well tomorrow I'm going to have to go to work and hear the same stuff over and over again. But like I tell them at work, I say, until you come and see Portsmouth for yourself, you come and see and work and drive and live and eat here, then that crap that you see on TV is not the whole story. You all have me to think, to, to look at, to see this is what Portsmouth can be about, somebody that wants to progress and somebody that's able to go out here and work hard. Because I tell people all the time, I am proud to be from the City of Portsmouth. I love this city, and I can go anywhere, the first thing on my resume is my address, and it says Portsmouth, Virginia, 23701. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shana Jones, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Manager. My name is Shana Jones, and I am a job coach here in Portsmouth. I am, I do resumes for the citizens, and I also follow them weekly with helping them find a job. Next month, we're hosting a teen summer job summit, where we're trying to get 15- and 19-year-olds employed. And during that summit, we plan to do resume building, mock interviews, vision boards, self-help exercises, as well as assess whether or not they have their learner's permit, their IDs, savings and checkings account, and we're supposed to educate them on the importance of maintaining good credit. So I commend today to ask if there's any resources or assistance with raising awareness so that the teens in Portsmouth can know about it. So that's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And Dr. Patton, would you have somebody?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Members of City Council, this young lady had a booth at the Craddock Play Day or Fun Day, and I advised her to both work with, through Mr. Pace, with Parks and Recreation, and I also advised her to meet with the school board's superintendent.
So you're working it?
Yes, we were working with her.
Thank you. The next speaker is Shawna Futral.
She, she, my partner, she just left.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Sergeant Major Clyde Toler, and sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, I'm Mr. Wayne Staff, City Manager, City Attorney, Clyde Toler, 1000 Block, Blair Street, Park View. Well, it's good to be here. Memorial Day is coming up, and I will be going again in June, up to the big convention, as you know, Branch 37 of the Fleet Reserve Association, which include active-duty Marines, Coast Guard, and Navy, and retirees. We uphold in this city. I saw in the paper the day where a young gentleman said, let's talk about Portsmouth, let's, everybody get together and make Portsmouth outstanding. I came in tonight, I met him going out of here. So, I'm not ashamed of Portsmouth, or not, not from Portsmouth, but I always speak up for it. I get a whipping every time I go, when you people do bad thing. But one thing I got to say, respect. A school board has no respect for this council. This was awful. Everybody's talking about it. Mayor, I'm not trying to tell you how to run your business, but the next time the chairman will come up here and you say, that's enough, shit, one time hit the gavel, sorry, now I'm throwing him out. Hey, he can't come here disrespecting you like that. That needs to stop. I take my hat off to you, Dr. Patton, you and your budget, and your team, y'all did a good job. Now look, don't keep on beating the bush going up on my taxes. Don't build no two new schools, build one new school, and you taking, fix that church and bridge before it fall in the water. I started to go across there, and I saw it waving at me like salute, I turned around and went around. Now look, that school board, when you giving them all this money, that's what I want them to do. I want them to come before you. I would like to know how many kids graduated from all three high schools? How many marched? How many got their diploma? How many didn't get them because they didn't pass SOL test? Now, if you getting all this tax money, I want to see some results from this school board, instead of holding out your mouth, give me, give me, give me, no, uh-uh, because you going to go up on my tax. I bought a brand-new car, and I got to bill $2,267 tax, told me I had to pay it all in full, almost fell off the chair. But the lady told me that's what you get for buying a brand-new car. I said, well, I don't believe this. But they said it would make, fix it, so I paid three payments. So I said, no. I gave my credit card, and then they charged me $47 for the, paying for it on the credit card. This highway robbery. But you got to pay, you got to pay. Anyway, the wounded warriors, the AMTs, you know, this was a very sad thing that I attended over at the Moose Lodge here last month. These kids got one arm, there's one kid that had two legs, there's one kid that had one arm, he can throw a softball, he take the glove, throw it under his arm, and then he can catch the ball, then he, then turn around and pitch it. This lieutenant, he'll be probably coming up here speaking about this, but he on the police force. I must, I must have took about maybe pretty close to maybe 100 pitches with these young kids. It's something to see. Now, I was listening at this, people who came up here tonight telling you about their neighborhood and their store. I had a gentleman later that he's passed now, and he lived in that neighborhood. Hey, do not let them put their store there. I stand with them, and you saw those kids, I hate to see one of them hit by a Big Mac truck. All right, Memorial Day coming up, I'd like to see all of you out there for Memorial Day. And look, if you see a veteran, take your hat off to him, and look, I don't care if you don't stand up, you don't salute, it's very disrespectful, but I fought for that flag and many others, they gave up their arms and their legs, and when I see somebody sit down and kneel, I look at them and think they're idiots. And y'all have a nice night.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Sergeant Major, wanted to thank you for the card that you gave us in recognition of our service, and thank you for your service as well. You, you served a lot longer than I did, and you probably saw some real action, and fortunately, I, I didn't make it into real action, but I salute everybody who served our country. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Also, Mayor, on the subject of school funding, the latest per capita figures on per student expenditure from localities, I'm going to read them. Portsmouth, $11,230. Suffolk, $11,282. Norfolk, $11,686. Chesapeake, $11,265. Hampton, $11,097. So, it's no $10,000 there, and as far as per capita expenditures, we, we certainly stack up very well in that category to set the record straight.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, just a couple of things. As far as the per capita spending and the comparisons, I think you have to also statistically account for the significant poverty that's in this city and control for that as well. In regards to the spending on education, I find it interesting that here it is now, we're in the month of May, in particular with May 17, 1954, the, the Brown versus Board of Education decision. And I, I find it interesting here in 2018 that we have those who have gone through that system are now standing before a council in a predominantly black city that has 70% black students, questioning the amount of funding that's going to a school system. That, that is, that is very troubling to hear that type of conversation. And as far as Mr. Toler, your, your comment, Toler, in regards to who you categorize as an idiot because of their right to sit or stand for the flag, I would think you should look at the mirror, look in the mirror whenever you use such a term as that.
Let's not have any personal attack. We'll continue with our non-agenda speakers. The next speaker is Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the West Vine Farms. On Thursday, May the 17th, there was a Hampton Roads Planning District Commission meeting. There were two updates, one from the Hampton Roads Economic Development Authority, HRA EDA, and the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, VEDP. The Hampton Roads Economic Development Authority, HRA EDA, gave an overview of Hampton Roads. It is under, talking about it, it is underperforming and falling further behind peer competitors in other regions of Virginia. And sluggish job growth, household income is lower today than 20 years ago. The presenter listed the priority areas for business that needs improvement, like talent. There's a limited pool of experienced and position-skills people. Cluster, there's limited knowledge sharing and collaboration between universities, research institutes, and commercial sectors. Infrastructure, there's high road transportation costs and limited presence of road haulage service providers. Real estate, there's limited availability of suitable and shovel-ready sites and limited office, lab, and flex space. Cost, there are high transportation costs, high real estate costs, especially for industrial sites, and higher utility costs than some leading competitors. The next presenter gave an update of the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, In 1995, the Virginia General Assembly created the VEDP to better serve those seeking a prime business location and increased trade opportunities, and therefore to foster increased expansion of the Commonwealth's economy. The mission of the VEDP is to enhance the quality of life and raise the standard of living for all Virginians in collaboration with, with Virginia communities through aggressive business recruitment, expansion, assistance, and trade. Developers thereby expanding the tax base and creating higher-income employment opportunities. The mayor and the city manager were not at this meeting to see about using this information and resources to help Portsmouth be equal to other cities in our metropolitan statistical area. Portsmouth elected are not interested in using the resources to help the people rise to the standard of other cities. Instead, the elected has chosen to use the city manager to destroy the city. On May the 7th, 2018, there was a city council briefing on the Crawford Gateway Revitalization Strategy update to destroy the city. This destruction is to provide access to the waterfront and reinvigorate downtown with substantial economic development. The city council authorized city staff to execute five projects that would set the baseline for redevelopment efforts. We, the people, did not authorize city council to move forward with this Crawford Gateway Revitalization Strategy. This city council has usurped the sovereignty of the people, see the municipal organizational chart, see the Constitution of Virginia Bill of Rights, the Virginia Constitution, which reads, "A declaration of rights made by the good people of Virginia and the exercise of their sovereign power, which rights do pertain to them and their posterity as the basis and foundation of government." The foundation of our government in Portsmouth is the people, not city council. You, the elected, have, usurped the authority of the people. Nothing you say can take away the people's sovereignty. No comprehensive plan, no Crawford Street corridor study, and no site selection for a public safety complex. We, the people, want to know, who did this planning behind the people's back? Someone did some backdoor dealings after the July 12, 2016 work session when the engineer gave an update on 801 Water Street. The plan was to renovate 801 Water Street to complete the relocation of the police department. The next idea for the police department was to use 1801 Portsmouth Boulevard for a police station. One councilwoman suggested selling 801 Water Street. We, the people, want to know the details of how the Crawford Gateway Revitalization Strategy came into being without the people's consent. We, the people, are tired of being bullied by this council. It is going to stop, and you better start talking with the people. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Our last speaker is Richard Harris, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, leadership of the city. My name is Richard Harris, a Portsmouth resident, and I'm going to follow Sergeant Major, unfortunately. I want to talk about Saturday, May 26, at Bayside Harley-Davidson, we are having the first annual Vet Fest. In case you don't know, every day, 22 veterans and one active-duty member commit suicide. Last year, there's 140 police officers also that committed suicide. In November 2012, someone that has become a very close friend of mine, that I've recently met about two years ago, his son in 2012 sent him a message, said, "Love you, Mom and Dad, bye." They found it in 22 to keep his memory alive in the, in the area. Since then, we've grown to, we have advocates, advocates in about 20. Since then, we've grown to, we have advocates, advocates in about 20 states and now about seven foreign countries. But the Bayside family has opened up the whole facility to us. There's a car show. I know the mayor's going to be interested in that. Last, there was somewhere around 150 people already registered. There's going to be a motorcycle show, Jeep show, about, I think 8:45 will be leaving from Waters, or 9:45 leaving from Waterside on a 22-mile memorial ride, ending up back at Bayside. And there's several sponsors. Senator Lucas is one of our major sponsors along with Delegate Heretic. And all we try to do is raise funds to provide assistance to veterans, police officers, active-duty, because a lot of times that stigma placed on the PTSD and that kind of thing, they think that it's going to ruin their career. We recently gave a scholarship to a resident of Portsmouth, actually, that's an Air Force veteran that, as recently as about 24 months ago, he was taking 26 different pills from the VA and now he takes none. We just recently sponsored his treatment over in Norfolk from hypoventric oxygen therapy. That's about $7,000. But anyway, just to let you all know, Saturday, about 10:30, we'll have opening ceremonies. Dave Bray, who was Navy medic, got stationed with Second Marine, Second Battalion, two tours in Afghanistan. He's now a singer-songwriter and his album just today was listed number six on iTunes. It's his first one. It's not been released to the public yet, it's, or not in CD form, it's available on iTunes. He's going to be the main entertainment. There's also a blues band, Diatonic, is a band from Virginia Beach, I believe it is. There'll be several, I believe, Silver Star recipients, Medal of Honor, hopefully, not, not sure yet. Our treasurer will be there, Bronze Star recipient, along with several of the Legion of Merritt recipients. And it's not just open to veterans, it's open to everybody. We'll have knocker balls, I'm not sure what that is, but it's this big ball that you get in and play like adult soccer, run into each other, human darts, hadn't figured that one out either. But I just want to make sure that you all know about it. About 10:15, 10:30, we'll be starting and please, if you can attend, in between the Elizabeth River Run, the Moju Festival, please stop by Bayside. What, like I said, there'll be all the veteran service organizations will be there and a lot of different vendors. There will be a beer tent. Actually, I think there's two beer tents, food vendors, and like I said, the bike show, the car show, the Jeep show and everything else. So please come out and support N22. It's going to be a very good day. And we'll see you Monday because N22 is also in the parade. Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes one of a person sitting in the audience, the Honorable Steve Heretic, our delegate, who represents Portsmouth in the General Assembly. And delegate, if you would, stand up and we thank you for what you do for our city. Because there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.